Let's see. Call meeting to order a roll call of members.
You got it?
You got it? Okay. Number two, do you want to take a minute and go through A through F?
Yep. If there's any questions on any of those, these are just all skit to be. Start with our general fund, go through some of those things. Pretty early in the packet there. There's just a few that I want to make sure that go over and explain a little bit. The biggest one being index of Oklahoma for $66,462.50. That was the bill for the intercom system that we put in. And that 376 out there is just the code we use since we're using for security funding. There we go. So that, and then there'll be some additional things that we use this year to finish that communication system out with. You'll see Amazon Capital Services for school supplies, $5,444.31. Just about halfway down that list. $797, that's homeless funding that the school gets. And so we purchase supplies if we have students that come in and are considered homeless. We have supplies that we can give them, whether that's backpacks or just your typical staples, you know, notebooks, pens, pencils, anything like that that they may need. Independent Diesel Services, we've had some issues with some of the air conditioners. This is for bus number eight. And we will have some other bills coming in the next month or two, just getting our buses repaired. But we've been using them out of ENA. They do a really good job. They do all of our bus inspections, so they've become kind of familiar with our buses. Capture Kids Hearts, as you know, we started that program, invested a lot into that last year. And so part of that is there's continuing cost with it. This gives really our two principals access to online resources, surveys, and guidance throughout the year to keep that program going. And so that is a yearly renewal fee, $3,000 per hit. Everything else on there is pretty well either smaller things, some reimbursements, or just our annual monthly bills and payments. Just started going over the general fund. You didn't miss much. Our building fund. We had a late invoice come in for $2,000 there. That was for some work that we did on the baseball and softball fields. They come in and cut out the aprons and just kind of took care of some things that were needing some attention over there. So that was ball field maintenance. Simpsons had to come in and do some refrigerator freezer repair for us. And then we had a plumber come over to the property across the street. And there were several things that we discovered there that we had some lines that were actually broken. But then there were some other things underneath the house that was just not done correctly. And so it just made more sense to go ahead and get it all fixed and do it right instead of putting Band-Aids on things as we keep going. We do have tenants over there that are living there and raining that right now that will take good care of it. So that was kind of an unplanned expense there, but I don't think if we would have taken care of it then, we would just kind of have a bunch of little problems that are going to keep coming. So that's been done. We got that up to speed. Other than Keystone, kind of our final bill with them in the child nutrition account, nothing really there except for some reimbursements to a few people that have overpaid on their lunch account. We can keep moving forward. And now we're into this year's fiscal year, so fiscal year '25. General fund. Costs so far. O-SIG, that's our property insurance. That's the first of three payments there for $47,104. And then O-SAG down there at the bottom, that's workman's comp insurance that we paid. And that's a one-time payment there for $19,577. Building fund. Not much there. We've Dow Security Systems, that is our fire alarm system. That's the cost for our yearly monitoring that they do for $1,968. And then precision testing laboratories. I believe that's our asbestos. Yearly annual testing. And we have no, nothing out of the child nutrition account on there for this fiscal year yet. Activity fund. My contender's been busy trying to get everything closed out for the end of the year and get the new year started. We do have one, excuse me, two transfers that we would like to take care of. We've done this for several years. We need to transfer the interest in the interest account. And what we usually do is we put that into that beautification account. This year, that's $218.14 as we have to zero out that interest account each year. And then we have a transfer from the class of 2022, $869.64. And transfer that to the beautification account as well. Any questions on any of those things before I move on to? The treasurer's report. As of June 30th, 2024, on this report, you can kind of see where our carryover funds balances are. Our general fund ended at $1.566,681.3, which was a little more than I anticipated. So that's a good thing. And we had a few expenses like the intercom system that we would not, we will get that money back, but we haven't got it back yet. So we'll be reimbursed for that. The state informed us that we would actually get approximately $170,000 from them because of the pay raises and we being one of the schools that are not on the formula. So we didn't get that money like a lot of the other schools. So we were told that sometime in the next few weeks, we should be getting about $172,000 from the state to help offset that cost because we had to take on that cost. Whether or not that money will be earmarked and will be given to us again, don't really know yet. But it's there right now, and so expect to get that in a couple of weeks, which will be great and very beneficial. So general fund is in good shape right now. Building fund is about right where we were last year. We spent approximately $6,500 less than we brought in. So we've been paying several, or paying fast salaries out of that plus trying to do just some other projects here and there when we can. So, you know, that's kind of how I planned that in the building fund this year. Whatever we brought in, we were probably going to spend. So we were about right on the mark with that. Moving forward, I think that this is one of those years that I think we should move those salaries back into the general fund and then allow that building fund to grow a little bit more. So that's kind of the plan for that moving forward, and we'll keep doing that. Our lunch fund, $54,757. And, you know, we're allowed to carry over only about three months worth of operating costs, and so that's right on the money with it. We've had to spend that down a little bit after COVID. We had a lot of that federal reimbursement money in there. We did a $20,000 freezer project last year. We've been paying a few salaries or partial salaries out of child nutrition fund. So even if those back to the general fund, and then we will just see what we get as far as other expenses. Hopefully, we don't have anything terribly expensive that come our way. But then that fund should be able to just, whatever we bring in, we're going to spend. And then that three months of operating expense will be there in case there is an emergency or something that comes up that we needed for. Root Bond Fund, that's about, you know, that's kind of the cushion that we have there from one year to the next after we pay off, make those bond payments when the money comes over from the sinking fund and we write those checks. We have about $63,000 there each year of this leftover. This year, we finally do not have a negative fund balance in the sinking fund. So there's $4,442.48. Over that, that's been going on for a while now because of tax protests and other things that has affected that. So that's, that's good to see that on the positive side. So all in all, we're in pretty good shape still. And we've got some good news, like I said, coming into this, this year financially. We'll have to wait to see kind of how gross production does. There are some tax, tax protests that have been going on for several years that last I heard early last week is that they're getting really close to settling. That would mean we would receive some of those payments that we haven't received, but probably only 50 to 60% out of 100% from three or four years ago. Something is better than nothing. It will also mean that once that is settled at that rate, our valuation will drop a little bit because of that. So then we will have to look and see what that looks like moving forward. But having that, but hell, we weren't getting that money anyway. So all in all, I think that that's, that's good news. It's not great because we lost some part of that, and it's just been sitting there. But that fluctuation of up and down, not knowing that would kind of go away, and so it should provide some more stability there, which will be easier to plan for when it comes to the budget. Anything else?
I don't know.
Got one? Okay. I said, unless there are questions, I'll leave that.
You're planning on moving the salaries for the lunch staff to cafeteria?
Just, we only have two. Our child nutrition director, Parker, salary is being paid out of that. And then we have one kind of part-time employee there that we've been paying out of that, and so we'll move those back to the general fund.
Yes, definitely.
And building staff. Yeah, which all in all is probably about pretty close to $85,000, $90,000 total.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Moving on, number three, principals report. Just Mr. Ruth and I, Mrs. Patterson, we're celebrating our anniversary.
We had a handful of kids come to our summer school here and get some stuff to complete. FCCLA got back from national convention on the fourth. I haven't talked to Ms. Flunkett to see how that went, but I think very, I think we had some students do very well up there. We're in the middle of summer, so it's kind of quiet. But I know softball and cross country can start in a couple of weeks. Football will be starting in about a month, a half a night. Lots of kids showing up for summer pride, so we're four weeks away from everybody being back in the building, so.
Happens fast.
It does.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Number four, district capacity numbers. So we usually reevaluate this in July. We did increase those capacity numbers for the elementary, really just kindergarten through fifth grade, I believe back in May. But we left sixth through 12th grade where they were. And so right now, based off information that we have, textbooks available, teachers available, class schedules, we feel pretty comfortable increasing these sixth through 12th numbers to these following. And I'll just go through, I know you all have, should be in that packet kind of towards, maybe towards the back. Those are there, but I'll just go through each grade, starting with pre-K and read those capacity numbers off. Pre-K, of course, is 20. Kindergarten, first grade and second grade would all be set at 32. Third grade, which is a big class to begin with, 36. Fourth grade, 32. Fifth grade, 35. And then moving to middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all of those would be moved up to 35. Freshman class, ninth grade, 35. Tenth grade, 30. So small classes to start with. And then 11th grade, 35. And 12th grade, 30. This would, this would increase, like I said, most, every grade, a few students, some a little bit more than others. But right now, we've got two transfers pending. But we've heard, we've heard there could be more than that. And I think at one time, what did we discuss today, like 10?
Yeah.
Not necessarily transfers, maybe, but new students. So those would be some that would either be moving in the district or transferring here. So, I mean, we, we would like to increase those so that we can bring along, you know, students that want to come here. But we don't want to just go crazy with class sizes either and then create a problem. So we feel pretty comfortable with these numbers.
So all these numbers leave room in those classes or?
Right now, there is room. There are not this many kids in those classes. So, you know, if we have kids that live in the district, they could put us over this, so we just wouldn't have any room for transfers.
There's no question.
Yeah. So if they live in district, it really doesn't matter what this number is, we got to take them. So if we have 50 kids in third grade because 20 of them moved in in the summer, that's just something we got to deal with.
I assume you have the choice of a transfer, even if you have room? Do you accept that?
Yeah, well, it's pretty limited now. We can take attendance prior semester, I believe is what we look at, attendance, behavior issues, and we can look at those two things. We can deny based on that if we didn't feel like they met the criteria. If there's a student who aren't IEP and we do not have the resources available to provide for that, that's another area that we could, and we have had to deny transfers based on that. So it has changed a little bit because of the open transfer laws and policies that they passed a couple of years ago. Of course, the OSSAA now has a transfer policy, but we're right in the middle of a window. Students in high school can transfer at any time. They get one transfer, but they have to do it by July 15th. If they do, and they, and there's some other criteria, that if they haven't attended more than one high school, then they would be granted eligibility based off of that. And so we haven't, we haven't had any of those requests coming in yet. As far as I know, we haven't had anybody believe because of that either. So, but like I said, there, our current class size numbers, based on last year's enrollment, this would allow anywhere from two to maybe four or five seats.
Yeah, I think in the sophomore class, there's about six. And in the senior class, I think there's about seven. So there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of room there. But with our schedule, we didn't want to, if we get more than 30, it gets pretty tight in the classroom because those two classes are several, the times of the day they're not split. So getting 30 group kids in some of our classrooms is pretty tight.
I will make a motion to approve the district transfer capacity numbers.
Wait a second.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number five, district staff communication policy. So as of July 1st, there is a new law that adds to things that we need to include in our electronic or digital communication policy. We do have a policy that is not this strict or this detailed. Basically, the law says that as a school employee, teacher, custodian, substitute, anybody that is employed or paid by the school cannot have any form of digital or electronic individual communication with a student. And so that's, that's kind of the main thing that I think that needs to be discussed with this. And I'll go through it here a little bit. Like I said, some of this is already in our current policy as far as like on social media. Teachers and staff should not be friends with students on social media. So we have a policy already that stipulates that. So to go through this, part of the law also states that annually, we will provide training to our staff members so that they know how to navigate this. I will go ahead and tell you, there are still several questions. And the law does not clearly define a lot of the gray areas that are there. For instance, a phone call. The, the law doesn't say anything about a phone call. It says digital communication, but it doesn't specifically say anything about phone calls. So, you know, for instance, our ag instructor is there to help our students out with their animals. If they have a problem and don't know what they should be doing, they recall, you know, for like Snyder, he's in help with this. Whatever it is, is having problems. We're trying to figure out if that's allowable or is that phone call going to have to now be made to the parent? Parents not always there to help take care of kids. There are a lot of things that we're going to have to try to help work through as we go. So as we go through this, I just want to say that as far as our staff is concerned, Ruth and Mrs. Patterson and I, we've all talked, we don't have any other concerns that are thinking through with this legislation to be here. So trying to keep that in mind and trying to operate within the district law. There may be some changes at times that we need to revisit this until we can iron it out and get it right for what works for us. This is what came from the OSSBA. And so I think because it's still summertime, but we have a lot going on, there are some things that we need to go ahead and get put into place and look to approve now so that coaches and sponsors and those that are working right now with, with students who cooperate. So like I said, number one, this is improper fraternization with students using electronic or digital communication. Teachers may not list students as friends on networking sites. All B contacts with students should be through the district's school-proof platforms, which I will get to those in a second. I have those listed on here that I would suggest that we approve tonight. Inproper contact via electronic or digital communication is prohibited. Inappropriateness of posting items with sexual content and appropriateness of posting items, exhibiting or advocating use of drugs and alcohol. Monitoring and penalties for improper use of district computers and technology. Said a lot of these things, we already have a policy in place and have been doing it. As per state law, employees are discouraged from sharing content or comments containing the following when directed at a citizen of the state of the Oklahoma. Obscene sexual content or links, links to obscene sexual content, abusive behavior, bullying language or conduct for encouragement of illegal activity and disclosure of any information required to be maintained as confidential by law regulation or internal policy. In this policy, is this next part that's underlying electronic or digital communication that kind of defines that includes, but does not? that kind of defines that includes, but is not limited to emails, text messages, instant messages, direct messages, social media messages, messages sent through software applications, and any other electronic or digital means of communication. Social networking or social media means interaction with external websites, services based upon, just some contribu- contributions to the content. Types of social media include social and professional networks, blogs, microblogs, video, phone sharing, and social marketing. Comments? I won't read that one to you. So having said all of that, the next page at the back of that kind of describes what that looks like and kind of how this policy would dictate that we handle it. It says superintendent or designated will periodically conduct internet searches to see if teachers have posted inappropriate materials online. When inappropriate use of computers and websites is discovered, the school principals and superintendent will download the offensive material promptly bringing that misconduct to the attention of the school district's legal counsel for review. Board of Education shall designate school-approved platforms. Administration shall publish school-approved platforms on the district's website and in student or staff handbooks. School personnel engaging in electronic or digital communication with an individual student shall include the student's parent or guardian in any electronic or digital communication unless such communication is on a school-approved platform and related to school and academic communications. The only exception to this requirement may be made in the case of an emergency, subject to subsequent notification to the parent or guardian. School employees shall make reasonable efforts to use school-approved platforms, systems, or applications that allow automatic inclusion of parents or guardians in communications with students. School employees reported to have engaged in electronic or digital communication that would violate this policy. State law shall be placed on administrative leave while the school district investigates the incident. If the investigation finds that no misconduct occurred, the school authority shall be reinstated in the incident noted in the personnel filing. Employees engaged in any of the above referred prohibited behaviors are subject to the possibility of penalties for the termination, failure to use judgment, incidents will be reported to compliance with district policy and state law. Like I said, there are still a lot of questions that we have. For example, what about relatives, nieces, nephews?
Small town.
Yeah. So, you know, and that's going to be, like I said, this, I feel like we'll need to have this in place. We're going to approve these things, and then as we get closer to the school, try to get all those questions answered so that we can provide that training to our staff so that there's not as many questions, I guess. Like I said, the, the law is still pretty unclear. I get it. I understand the idea behind it. I would like to see a little more local control there so that we can decide what's best for us. Having said that, right now, the platforms that I would suggest that we include on this policy would be school-issued Gmail accounts, school-created Google classrooms, school-staff monitored and controlled social media pages such as Facebook, X, whatever, Instagram. We have those pages. Students can like those pages. They can follow it. They can get the same information, but they wouldn't be allowed to comment. So it's my understanding that a comment, if we were to respond to a question or a comment, that would be one-to-one communication. So talking to other schools and districts and administrators, they are including their social media accounts on there for that reason, not for sending private messages. Again, that would be monitored as part of the policy too. But to put those things kind of under that umbrella, I think that that would be wise to list it. The last one is an app, GroupMe. We've used that for years. As far as the coaches go, with the athletic teams, we've used that. I know our summer league has used that. I think for a long time, it's, it's a messaging app that a lot of people are very familiar with. I talked to one of our local churches. It's something that they use. We have teachers that are Sunday school teachers. They're small group leaders. They're sponsors. And so they use that, and one of the questions is, does that, does this law extend outside of school? And like a church setting, if they're a small group leader and they need to get a hold of the kids in those small groups, are they allowed to do that? We don't really know one hundred percent, but we do know that if this is a school-approved platform, then I believe we're providing our teachers a level of protection there with that and this policy. So the GroupMe app does allow for parents to be in those groups. A lot of times, parents don't want to be in those groups. I know I use it for football and weightlifting. If we have, you know, we have kids, you know, what, what color pants are they wearing for their game on Friday? What time is the team meal? Where's it at? Motivational things. I mean, there are things like that that we would use that for. I don't think that it's any different really than anything that we've been doing. There's just going to be, you know, there's, I mean, if it was abused, there would be some pretty hefty consequences there. So... So if you've got questions, fire away because I, I may have the same ones.
So question for you on the GroupMe stuff. When it is set up in GroupMe, who is the administrator of the accounts? Who would be monitored? So like, if a teacher has a GroupMe account set up for her classroom?
I don't think the teachers would probably use GroupMe. This would be more for coaches and teams, you know, Mr. Parrish with the one act, kids. Teachers use Google Classroom for those types of things and email, but it would be the adult.
Is that CSO? Is that Google?
CSO is used for the teachers to communicate with the parents, but not the kids. So I don't, I mean, teachers don't need to send first, second, third graders individual messages.
Does it need to be listed on the digital platform?
I don't, I don't believe so. Because like I said, I don't see any reason why a teacher would need to send a first, second, or third grader an individual message. And that's really what this policy is saying, that you can't message a student individually unless it's approved by a platform. And I mean, CSO has always been used, I think, as a way for the teacher to communicate with the parent anyway, and that's, that would have to be required. And so, I mean, we could look at it. I just, looking through it, I, I don't know why that would need to be.
Well, if it's specific for students and it's not, if it is more parent and students don't have access, I don't know why it would be.
Well, and that's like, so, I mean, the Gmail accounts and the Google classrooms, I mean, really, a lot of that's going to apply to the older students that, you know, teachers may be going to, you know, or maybe the student is probably going to initiate that conversation. They're going to shoot that teacher an email, say, hey, what, what am I missing? Well, this will, this way they can message it back. I just, I don't see that happening at the elementary as much.
So obviously, everybody can see it's for to protect these students. Do you, you think that the district can have any gray area to use common sense, you know, to address things individually?
I think that's where part of the policy that, that says the superintendent or the designated need will periodically conduct and the process that we have to go through because if something is deemed inappropriate, the chain of command is, it comes to the administrators for us to review that and then make that decision on, is this appropriate? Is it not? If it's questionable, then we can refer that to our legal counsel and we can go through those steps there. So I feel like that's, I think that's what you're asking. I feel like that's where we have that ability to say, well, that's, it's not inappropriate or it was okay, or yes, this was an emergency. Like I said, I, knock on wood, can't even think of a time that that's ever come up before with this.
You just don't want to see somebody get automatically fired. Like I said, if they're in a group, you know, if they're running a small group in a church and they have to email or, you know, contact a bunch of kids that they've lost their job.
Yeah. And that's what, that's why I felt like if we put these things on there, that kind of extends that umbrella and gives them a little bit of protection there. Because like I said, I don't one hundred percent trust our staff to make good decisions. But I don't want to see, you know, somebody out there with a grudge trying to entrapped in a situation with something like that. The thing about the messages too is if a message is sent, I mean, there's, you can take a screenshot of most of those things. I mean, if we, you know, things get really bad, I mean, they can, they can file and, you know, they can dig under those phones and get messages. Whether you think they're the leader or not, I mean, it's, there are ways to get a hold of what really happened and what was said there. So... Like I said, I, I, I feel like that these things that are listed here give us the, the best opportunity right now to still have those, you know, communication, like I said, with GroupMe, and we would provide, you know, that extra added training. I mean, we could, if, if this was approved tonight, we can get a hold of all of our coaches and sponsors first thing tomorrow and say, hey, you know, you're in charge. You're the administrator of the group. Everything needs to be done in that group as far as that goes. And if it's approved, then if that message is sent in a group to the whole team, there's no problem at all. It's just when those individual messages are being sent. And if an individual text message needs to be sent, you include the parent. I sent one this morning. I had a kid that didn't show up to wait, so I thought was going to be there, and so I included his dad and him and sent them both a text message. I mean, it's not hard to do, just...
I understand that even if you approved these Gmail accounts, that would still be the practice. You would have to include CC a parent on that email.
I don't think so because it's approved. If it wasn't approved, then I think you would have to. Yeah. School personnel engaging in electronic or digital communication with an individual student shall include the student's parent or guardian in electronic or digital communication unless such communication is on a school-approved platform and related to school and academic communications. So if they needed to email that student, this being approved in our policy, they definitely could. I mean, they could CC a parent and just make that practice if they do, but they wouldn't necessarily have to.
Are those school emails the Gmail accounts?
Yeah.
I think I have a question.
Like I said, we can, we can revisit this if it looks like, you know, CSO or something like that needed to be used, or if there's some great new thing that comes along the way. There are some other apps that are available that would do the same thing as GroupMe. The reason we went with this is because we, we've been using it. We know that parents have used it even in summer league stuff, and so we felt like there was some familiarity there. I think our, there's a company that offers some messaging. Of course, you know, I've gotten all kinds of emails, you know, but it's thousands of dollars a year for a subscription to be able to, to do some of these things whereas, you know, GroupMe is free. So that's, and I know there's other, some other districts are using Remind, which is just like GroupMe. It's just a different name, and some other messaging things like that. One, one thought I did have, I didn't put it in here, leave it up to you guys to decide, is we could easily have every coach, sponsor, teacher submit a list of the groups they would like to create or have and, and turn that into us. You know, I've got, I've got a football, you know, a high school football group. So, I mean, there's, you know, we could just, you can turn those lists in and kind of be more aware of what's out there.
Make monitoring easier too.
Well, it, it doesn't, doesn't. I had a driver's ed group, and then this summer I had with students at summer school, and one messaged me on my driver's ed group to ask about summer school. So, you know...
Well, I'm not saying they have to limit the communication to that, but if you have a driver's ed group, then we know that that exists.
I think I do like the idea of if a group is going to be created and it's going to be used by a social group or a social network, whatever type thing, that administration be made aware of it. So like, you know, FCC LA is creating a GroupMe. You guys, as administration, should know it was a bit that way. You're not blindsided. They created this group. I have no idea what's being...
Well, and my thought was there is it would be, it would be real easy for somebody to maybe create a group that's not necessarily, what do they call them? The fakes?
Oh, yeah. That shit don't count or whatever.
You know, yeah, there's, there's a name for them. So it looks like this is the group, but it's really not because it may have been created by someone else. So if we had a list from the sponsors, then we know that's, that's the one. That's the school issued GroupMe account.
Right.
Now, the sponsors wouldn't be included in those things, but in those other ones, is what I'm saying. So if we want to put that in there, I would, I would include that just above the, where it says Cherokee Public Schools' approved digital platforms. I can just put a statement in there that school employees will submit to administration a list of all student digital or electronic communication groups, a statement like that in there, to make that part of the policy.
And I will make a motion to approve the communication policy with adding that the group has to be submitted to administration prior to setting it up.
I will second.
Dylan?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number six, interlocal agreement with city and county.
This one's a little easier. This is just our annual interlocal agreement that allows us and city and county to kind of provide some in-kind services to one another. Makes that all legal if, if we need their help, equipment, or maybe our help, or whatever that is, it allows us all to work together.
Make a motion that we approve the agreement. I'll second.
Dylan?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number seven, Almond Green Junior High High School handbook for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I just will, I will make some changes this year. I will add our policy on electronic communications in there now that it is approved. So it will, I will add that to it. But just a few things that we've changed in here that I wanted to go over. One, we've gone back from instead of forty-eight hours of fever-free, back down to twenty-four hours of fever-free, and I add language in there. It's twenty-four hours of non-reducing fever medicine. So, and then one of the bigger ones, right now, we have, everybody knows, we have a drug testing policy, and in the past, it's said for first, a positive drug test, you could be suspended from activities for up to three weeks, and I just took the up to out, and that way it doesn't matter. It's the same for everybody. One thing that did change is self-referral. Our policy said that if a student self-refers, it says they're not going to pass a drug test before they take it, and it came back positive, they wouldn't have to miss any activities, which I didn't necessarily like. I think there should still be some kind of consequence for that, so I just changed it to ten days. So if you self-refere that you're not going to pass a drug test, and you don't pass that drug test, and if, if I get a positive result back, then you're going to be out of extracurriculars for only ten days. So it's not the full twenty-one days, but there's still consequence for doing something that you shouldn't be doing.
What's it stated about? That, how many times can you, what, what'd you say?
Um, the first... Um, the first positive is three weeks, the second positive is six weeks, the third positive is, I think, a hundred and eighty days.
What if you come forward and we say, hey, we're gonna give you ten days? You know what I mean? Because you came forward and said, hey, I'm not gonna pass this. What if you, I mean, in the past, you came forward and you didn't miss any time?
Right.
How many times could you do that?
Once, it counted as your first one. It counted as your first positive. And so if you got drug tested again throughout the year, and you got, and came back again, it was automatically six weeks. So now it's still your first one, but if you self-refer and say you're not going to, there's still a little bit of teeth to it as you're, you're gonna miss something for ten days. You may not miss any activities in that time, but you may.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused. So if you're saying if somebody self-prefers, if it's their first offense, it will only be two, ten days?
Ten days.
If it's the second time they're saying you're self-referred, is it going to the six weeks, or is it going to stay as a ten day?
Um, because you're, the, the first time you, you do that, that's your.
One and only time you can self-refer.
Yes. The second positive drug test, the second positive drug test is six weeks. It says, it says here that the first referral, if you self-refer, that counts as the first positive drug test. So it's like your one free out. It does, it does say, I'm, what it says in there is, any, a self-referral would come, as, will count as a first positive drug test. And under the first one. So after that, uh.
Have you guys ever had somebody fail because maybe they were in a house where people were, say, say their parents smoked weed all the time? Or they didn't issue it, or they just got it?
The, the training that I've been through, contact doesn't come back as positive.
That's not a real thing.
Right.
Gotcha.
That, the training that I've been to, and I've, I've been told by the professionals that do drug testing, is contact ties not, you've actually gotta.
This makes you wonder if some kids got self-referred and they was like, man, I was at home last night and my parents were.
Well, but they use it still. They, they can still, they can come in and say, this is probably gonna be positive. But if it comes back negative, it's negative.
See, and, and if they self-refer and say, and say, I don't think I'm gonna pass.
They still have to take the test, even though they self-referred.
They still have to take the test. And I'm not gonna do anything until I get a positive result back from the drug testing company.
That's actually how that scenario.
Yeah.
Play out a few years ago, we had a student that was just sure they were gonna fail and came in and it came back and it was negative.
So, yeah, so then there's no consequences there. I mean, it was, it was hard enough for him to wait and come back and, you know, talk to his parents and talking to others and, but.
But my theory is now that, that kid won't self-refer. He's just gonna take his chances, because if he's hot, he's gonna miss ten days anyway.
Well, if he's hot, he does self-refer, he can miss twenty-one days.
I know, but if I'm a kid, I'm gonna say, oh, I'm gonna lose ten anyway, what's twenty-one? I'm not gonna tell him, let him know that I have a problem, that I can get help at this stage. I mean, the self-referral in drug policy is there for a reason. I mean, that's.
So, there was a loophole.
Good.
Where they came in and, you know, they knew that they had activities coming up. They came in and self-referral, there was no punishment.
Right. And that's why I asked how many, I mean, how many times they could do that before there was punishment? I mean, there's, that's their one-time get out of jail basically free card, but. I, I just think this is a more complicated issue than it appears. I mean, I think drug use is, you know, my personal feeling is one of the number one issues our kids face right now. And I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying I, I think there's more to it.
Right.
Beats the eye, but.
That's why I wanted to, I wanted to, if you self, or take that twenty-one days out for that policy, but I think there still needs to be some kind of consequence to doing an illegal activity, because I, I mean. Any other questions on that? I'll look through and find that word for you in a minute.
You wanna reduce it from like eleven to like seven, or?
No, I, I just.
I think it's worth bringing up, I'm not saying you have to change it.
Um, the other thing on semester tests up there, I just put six through twelve. I know sixth grade haven't been in that for a while. And so it just kind of, it makes it hard on sixth grade, because then they're supposed to be here. But some people, you know, they have to be here for all their classes. Some people have to take semester tests, some people don't have to take semester tests. And since it's part of our junior high, I just put everybody six through twelve in there, semester test policy. I updated graduation requirements, that's a yearly thing. Starting with this year's seventh grade though, when they get in high school, they'll have a different set of graduation requirements. With our state, they passed a law, now they have to have four math. So that's something coming down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's kind of difficult. So I think it's gonna be a little more local control, so we'll have to side those, but. And then high school promotion I put in there, it wasn't in there. And I kind of thought it was necessary, because just because a student's been here for three years does not necessarily, they have, mean they have enough credits to graduate next year when they're a senior. So I put in there, they also say, it says you have to pass five cores to be able to participate. But if, if you do that for three years and that's all you do, by the time you're supposed to be a senior, you only have fifteen credits and it takes twenty-three to graduate. And we only have seven classes in a day. So I talked with Ms. Jordan and some others, and so we, six, if you can, once you receive six credits, that's enough to be considered a sophomore. Twelve credits, that's enough to be considered a junior. That would put you at eighteen credits after your junior year. That would be enough to be considered a senior, because then you only have to have five to get to that graduation. You have to be enrolled in at least six core classes by state law anyways. So that gives them a little bit of leeway, but that wasn't in our handbook. The one minor reports I have to do every year is how many students did you retain? Well, in high school, the only way you can tell that is by credit. So this kind of gives us a guideline of where to go. Or if a student moves here and says, well, I'm supposed to be this grade, and we get their transcripts, now I can get their transcripts and say, okay, you have this many credits, this is the grade level you're gonna be in. That wasn't in there, but I thought it kind of gets some clarity of where they're at. And other than that, I think that's all our board policy changes. So. Our handbook policy, handbook changes. I did, I did put something out a few weeks ago, because we do have a locker policy that we are gonna require students to use their lockers this year instead of back, I mean, they can bring it back back to school, but then they have to put it in their locker. You saw with our, our policy numbers, our enrollment numbers, capacity numbers, I'm sorry. Some of our classes that aren't split, you get a lot of kids in one room and then they all bring a bag with all their books in it and then they lay it on the floor. It gets very complicated. I mean, it's almost a safety issue getting up and down aisles, getting in and out of classrooms. And it's just safer if they put their bags in their lockers and they carry their books. We've done it for years, but a few years ago, because of something that came down the road, we, we started carrying book bags to class. And I think now we can go back to using our lockers and we do have a locker policy, so.
How many minutes are there in between class?
Five.
Plenty of time to, to get to your locker, wherever it is and go back to class.
Well, another part of that too is baking is a problem. And I know we've got a lot of students that, that do it. And they're leaving them their bags. You know, it's a pretty easy place to carry them around. I know that we've had students that just fly, will sit there in a classroom and do it. And they can load it underneath their shirt, underneath their hoodies. So we felt like this is one more thing that we can try to do. To hopefully keep that from happening. It's gonna look somewhat suspicious, I feel like it. Student at a certain hour of the day keeps needing to go to the restroom and always has to go get something out of their backpack in the hallway. Now, we can't monitor that one hundred percent of the time, but we have cameras that are on there. So I'll go ahead and, and kind of segue into, we are going to be looking at using some security money to put vape detectors in all of our bathrooms over here.
They, you know, they have to, that's cool.
Yeah. And they are, they can be set up. Mr. Crut, myself, and Mrs. Patterson over there, we can get notifications if they're set off. And so it's, that brings just some people in to talk to them, but it's not a good, it's not a good thing. There's so much about that that's dangerous. And, you know, kids are kids, I don't think anything bad's gonna happen to them. We gotta try to take some steps there. So it may seem like a small thing, not bringing backpacks in the classrooms, but it can be part of a bigger picture, try to take care of a problem that's, seems to be just getting worse. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Vape detectors.
Also detects gunshots.
And cries for help.
Cries for help.
Wow.
Yeah.
They are, they're very expensive. So we're waiting to see what other policies. But like I said, we have the security money. And so if we qualify for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the handling.
Yeah, I'll just, real quick, the elementary's not on there. There were no changes to it, other than just did a full year-to-year start name and things like that. There was no policy changes in that, I forgot to mention that when we started. So that's why it was mainly just a junior high and high school.
I'll second.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number eight, seeking bids for a Suburban and a driver's ed car.
I've seen that driver's ed car, that thing's almost new.
Has new tires.
Yeah. Twenty-four years ago, twenty-five years ago. We've talked about that in the past, about getting ready and needing to update some more transportation. I think now would be a good time. Just looking at the finances, I think we're in a good position to go ahead and do that. And that would alleviate some stress later on. But to get the ball rolling on that, I would just, I'd kind of like to have board approval to do that. We'll need to get three bids for a new Suburban. So then we can discuss those once we get there. Right now, it would probably look like taking two-wheel-drive Suburban. And we would, at that point, trade it in towards a new one. The new one though, I would put on their specifications that would need to be four-wheel-drive. That would leave us with two. The older one that we would still have would be four-wheel-drive, so we could leave that on route. Would be the plan there. But just, you know, keeping good reliable vehicles in our fleet, I think is necessary. And I feel like we're finally at a point where we can do something like that financially and feel good about it. The driver's ed car, it's a, I, I listed it down there later also on our surplus, just in case we do. It's a two thousand, it's got a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight miles on it. I think that we could probably find something a lot better, a lot more reliable, when we have just one or two, or even, you know, just three staff members that need to go to training, rather than sitting in, in that older car, or in a Suburban, when there's only two people driving to the city. It makes more sense to have a better car. So I think there's probably, probably some good used options out there, but we'll look at both and see. I think you can get a pretty decent, you know, used vehicle that's got maybe twenty, twenty-five thousand miles in it. Pretty considerable, so anyway. It's, it's time for us to look at that. If we could do that now, then next year, you know, we might look at doing something again and getting our vehicles updated slowly instead of having to do a huge transportation bond or something like that at some point, trying to buy several all at once.
With the driver's ed vehicle, does it have the pedal and stuff on the other side? Is there gonna be?
It'll, it'll have to be installed.
Do you have an idea what the cost is to do that? Does it depend on that?
Fifteen hundred dollars or more.
It's, it's not much, it's just the cable that they have to run, connect it to your brake pedal.
Tom probably doing it over there, Jack.
Yeah.
On the Suburban, you got like a three-quarter ton or, or one ton or anything like that? Do you put a cap on the front or anything?
We have it in the past. I mean, those are things we can definitely look at later. And, I mean, I'd say most of those are probably three-quarter ton. You know, we'd like to set four-wheel-drive, make sure it's nine-passenger, so it would have the, the extra seat in the front, if you ever needed that. Safety package, and make sure it's got all the airbags and things in it equipped when you're home, get as much as possible of that one.
Seems like there's more than the air all the time.
I, if I was to guess, I'm, I'm thinking, if we did a, you know, a car, Suburban, I think we're probably looking somewhere around eighty, eighty-five thousand total for both. Would be a guess right now, so.
I'll make a motion for superintendent to seek bids for the Suburban and driver's ed car.
Sure.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number nine, contracts for LPC services.
We have contracted the last several years with both Carol and Alicia as LPCs. Both of them were here two days a week. We were using either ESER funds or counseling core money to help pay for those. Both of those funding sources are gone. And so sat down and visited with Mrs. Patterson and Mr. Crut and Mrs. Jordan. We both all agree that both of these have provided so much for our kids that we didn't want to just completely take it away. So what I've got right now, and have talked to both Carol and Alicia, is they agreed to come one day a week versus two. So that would be half of, you know, what they had been doing. But we all agree that would be better than not here at all. And that, having both of them here, would cost approximately thirty-one thousand for the year, for them to be here one day a week. I told them that, you know, around Christmas, we'll reevaluate it if it looks like, you know, there's maybe additional funding and we can do two days a week and go back to that. That might be something that we look at. But I just, we've got way too many kids that rely on both of them to just completely take that away and not have that available. I just, I think that we can find a way to do that at that cost right now. And then, you know, it'll have to be something we evaluate each year, but I think it's something we need to continue to do as long as we can. And so I think one day a week, I'm sure will be beneficial.
And is that thirty-one for each, or thirty-one combined?
Combined.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the contract with Carol and Alicia. For the twenty-four.
Set over.
It's a really long contract, really long contract.
Hard as hell to find, though. I'll second.
Goodwin?
Yep.
Poe?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
So we're going through number ten again, I guess, discussion surplus items, you know?
Yep, so twenty-two smart boards, ten Casio projectors, twenty-three HP laptop computers. Almost all of that right there is being replaced with equipment that we do. They're already purchased last year with some ESER funds. with some ESER funds and some rural schools money. Or we will be replacing with the K-20 grant money, which most of that obviously is at the elementary, which meant the award. So like I said, I mean, these things are just, they're outdated, they're in the way. We don't need them anymore. So we need to surplus them. We can list them online and try to see if there's another school out there that might be able to purchase them from us. But this will be the first step in getting rid of those properly. Multiple library books each year Mrs. Cudmore goes through. And any books that are extremely outdated, damaged, just not readable. She has several boxes of those from both buildings put together that we need to surplus.
Is that that?
That's part of it, yeah. One self-propelled micro rain irrigation unit. I'm not sure exactly when that was purchased, but I think it was probably about the time that we constructed the complex. It runs just off pressure. We really only have one place that it would even work if we need it. We have two of these. We have another one that has a motor on it that works better. This one strictly runs off the pressure. And so we only have one hide here that's over there on, close to Fifth Street by the discus that we could even hook this up. I don't think we've used it in the last four or five years. So talking to Billy, I think this would be a good idea to surplus those again. Put it out there. It's a good unit. There's nothing wrong with it. But if we can get that sold, there's some other equipment things that he and I have talked about that I feel like we could get some money out of that. We can put it towards something that we would use. Otherwise, it's just sitting in the barn taking up space. And then the, the two thousand Buick Carter Avenue with a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it. If we surplus that, we can look to see you know, either what we could get on a trade, if we traded it in towards something, or we can try to list that and sell it. I'd have to look at the blue book value on it. It's not, it's not much.
I'd make a motion to approve the items listed for potential surplus.
I'll second.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Number eleven, superintendent's report.
Okay, just going to go through a list here. I'll try to be quick. Our floors are just about done. The intercom project will be complete once we have a new server installed that can handle all of that, along with some security cameras that they will start on hopefully tomorrow. We had to replace a server that handles those. Canoka will be doing that. I mentioned the vape detectors, getting those, getting looked at. Carpet and the two junior high rooms, a minority in that I've talked about, that should start next Monday. So hopefully all of that will be in and completely done by the time school starts. One thing I'm gonna, we're not going to talk about it a whole lot here, but I just want to mention it because it's been all over the news, national news, is the mandate from Ryan Walters about teaching the Bible in our classroom. I could go on and on about this from several different points of view. What I want to say right now is, as far as we are concerned here, we have no direction from the State Department on how that's even supposed to look. So until we get more clarification guidance and legal guidance, things will operate as they have been. And that's really kind of where I'm at, where we are with that right now. Yeah, I better stop right there before I get all the information. So until we know more, school will look just like it has in the past in our classrooms. July fourth, we had fireworks, internal races, one whole tournament up here at the sports complex. So I just want to thank Billy and Mike, Aiden, Kai, Zach, Bert for getting everything looking great. It looked really nice. And then Cherokee Main Street organized that along with Lions Club and I thank some members of the Rotary. They came and used our facilities and did a great job taking care of it. It all looked great before and after. So we appreciate that. Other than that, school's going to be starting back soon, August eighth. It's our first day back. Teachers will be here on the fifth. And we're looking forward to another great year.
Were there any casualties from, kind of better word, from hosting the events here? Any damage to the
No, no, it was all, it was all great. So, yeah, they did a great job taking care of it, getting it picked up and all did good.
It was a nice, nice day.
Yeah, yeah.
Rotary has been disbanded.
Okay.
And so they, they weren't involved.
Okay, well, I knew Lions was there, but I knew at some time they'd work together, so
Well, we go to the Lions meetings and meet.
Okay, got you.
And then do whatever they do. We just don't pay dues.
All right.
Paul, you got there.
Any new business?
No new business.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
What's on?